Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am calling to order today's briefing meeting on Tuesday, June 26. The following components are on our agenda. Under Executive Services, we have an amendment to Policy 2.04 campaigning on school district grounds. Is this going to be a pre-briefing on it? Under Business Services, Ms. Kelly Letcher will be providing a preliminary budget for the year, school year 2019. Under Operations, we will be receiving a capital project update by Mr. Scott Rickenbacher, a safety update by Mr. Jerry Demming and Mr. Richard Parfitt. And then we also have a minor change memo under that that is not, that's an easy piece. Following that, we will take care of public comment regarding components brought forward today in today's briefing meeting, followed by the board member comments, board attorney and superintendent comments, and then good of the order. Does anyone have a good of the order to bring forward today? Ms. Patrica.
I've got one rather lengthy item on school resource officers and then two brief questions.
All right. Does anyone else have something for the good of the order? Ms. Morgan.
Yes, flag position.
What, what?
Flag position.
Flag position.
Okay.
And committee appointments.
Okay, and then I have, for good of the order, I also would like to bring forward that we have something added to workshops coming up soon so we can discuss how we will be, how the, let's see, how the members of the committee, for the oversight committee, should the tax referendum pass successfully, how those people will be chosen. So, Ms. Morgan, if it's possible, we will discuss that during good of the order time so we can get that.
All right.
Anyone else? All right, I think I have it done. I think I have it down for five, so I think I counted right. All right, let's go ahead and begin. Mr. Martin.
Yes, Ms. Larrivee, our board members, the Policy 2.04, if you recall, a couple of months ago, the board had discussion at a workshop about the application of this policy to the collection of candidacy, candidacy signatures, signatures for candidacy petition. And I explained to the board at that time that in the past, I've given advice that that activity is within the prohibition of the policy, and the board requested that the policy be amended to add language to make it clear that that activity is part of the prohibition of the policy. So that's the purpose of this amendment.
And you should have before you the amendment. It's on the first page of the amendment that he has written. Are there any, is there any, are there questions, discussion? Ms. Fisher.
Yes, thank you. In reviewing the policy update, I noted that 1E and 4 are redundant or repetitive. They're both saying the same thing. I did discuss it with Mr. Martin, and I guess what we want to do is decide, do we want to leave that the way it is, or do we want to remove either 1E or 4?
I guess the second sentence of 4, it is largely a duplication of 1E.
I guess the question would be, which do we believe is the more preferable place to have it?
I would say 4 because under, under 1, that's really addressing activities on a school campus, while the prohibition with respect to employees should apply whether they're on a school campus or at some other duty location.
All right. So then, is everyone in general in agreement to delete 4E?
1E.
Excuse me. Thank you. Okay, it seems like everyone would be in accordance with that. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fisher, for catching that.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else regarding Policy 2.04? If not, we will move on to the preliminary budget with Ms. Lecter, or Letcher. There's someone in the, in Collier County who, spelling is very similar, and they pronounce it with a hard "k" sound, so I have to catch myself. So, thank you very much.
So, today we're here to talk about the preliminary, but next year, we've been spending a lot of time reviewing things, going in depth and looking at, but I just want to go over some of the things that were made, some assumptions that were made. The main assumption is right now that there is a 7% increase built in, based on the.
That's built, that's based on the Department of Education's first FEFP calculation that came out. We will find out for sure, the property appraiser will certify to them on July 1st, and on July 19th, we will actually get the updated tax rule along with the updated required local effort at that time. In the capital budget, we also built in that same 7% increase that they were proposing, but in the out years, we built a 3% to 4% increase in the out years because we really don't know what's going to be happening.
Did the legislature require us to roll back the required local effort as they have in past years?
I won't know that yet, but more than likely, they'll continue with the rollback rate. So, that's what I'll find out for sure on July 19th. We have continued in this budget, the nine schools that were doing the additional 30 minutes of reading, we continued that on for the same nine schools, and we'll find out sometime in July if we have any additional schools that we need to add that 30 minutes to as well, but we decided to go ahead and continue with the nine that we have, and if they come out of that lowest performing status, this will at least help them, you know, continue making gains, so we left that in. The current FEFP from the state builds in a 1% increase in the student population, which is about, takes us to 92,803 students. We have continued the retention and recruitment bonuses for the 16 opportunity schools to help keep those good teachers at those schools. We have continued the relocation incentives to try and bring the best teachers to Lee County, so we've continued that into next year's budget. Things that we don't know yet, like I was talking about before, if we have any additional schools that fall within that lowest 300, we'll find out in July. We don't, have not received the second calculation. We will receive that on July 19th with our updated tax rule and our updated required local effort at that time, and that'll give us more information. Some of the realities that we're having to live with with this budget that we've received is while the legislature did give us $703 million, it sounds like a whole lot of money to some people, that is a $17.3 million increase over the current year, but of that $17.3 million, 7.2 of that is tied up into categoricals, so there are strings attached, and we can't use that for our day-to-day operations. We must use it based on what they have. Of that $7.2 million increase, 5.1 million of that is in that new legislation about safety school officers and the mental health requirements. Our insurance costs are rising, and to the general fund alone, our insurance cost is, has been an increase of $6.3 million in next year's budget. Our retirement rate is going up. It's a 4% increase over the current year, which is another $2 million. So that doesn't leave much money to do anything else after you take those pieces out of it. There is new legislation that we're looking at that's requiring us to have an internal auditor that is, becomes effective July 1st of 2019. However, we are looking at that, and we're probably going to be proposing to do that through contracted services rather than hiring someone. That way, we can make sure that we have a group of people who can meet all of the required areas because it's hard to find any one person who has the knowledge for that whole piece. So, we're looking at proposing the contracted services for that. Some of the details that are in this budget, when we built it, we have continued with the school's district resource allocation process that we have used previously. We are going to take a heavy look at this going into this year for the FY '20 and try and make that more efficient and make sure that the funding gets to the schools with the highest needs. When we do our department resources, we always look at what their current expenditures are. So we look at a three-year trend with the departments. That's where we start, then anything over and above that, they have to do through a request process, and then superintendent and the chiefs go through those requests and align the request and approve the items that help meet the Vision 2020 goal. With limited resources, it was limited things that could be added this year, so. We have the reserve contingency, which is required, of 23 million. That's a little over 3% of the general fund new revenue. Some of the initiatives that we've put in the budget this year is the reorganization of curriculum services, or really academic services as a whole, and Dr. Krill did an amazing job making sure that she stayed within the resources that were there before and just realigning those resources to make her plan for that area. We are reviewing the efficiency study to look for continued savings, so hopefully we can keep getting savings as we move forward. One of our primary initiatives and one of our main concerns is the safety of our students, so of course, the budget is built looking closely at the safety of our students, and the sales tax initiative that is on everyone's mind, and we are looking at that information. So the next steps with the budget, so of course bargaining has to happen, so we're moving forward with that. We're looking at the effects of all of the new legislation. The proposed tentative budget will be to you all on July 24th. That is when the law requires that we have that budget to you. We will be advertising that to the public on July 27th. We'll hold our first public hearing on July 31st, and then we will be briefing you again on the 29th for the information that will be moving forward during the final public hearing, which will be on September 11th. Is there any questions, comments?
Yes, regarding the school safety officer and the mental health requirement, $5.1 million to our district. Is there a breakdown for that? I mean, is there a recommended percentage?
So.
Or how does that?
The amount to the, to Lee County for this year is 4.5 million. The charter schools will get about 540 million of that. That is their proportionate share.
How much?
540,000. 540,000, I'm sorry. That was not right, 540,000. And then we have an alternative to suspension program that we do at our middle and our high schools so that we don't suspend the students out of school. We try and keep them in school. We do alternative suspension to suspension, and we pay for that out of our safe school dollars. Currently, that's budgeted at about $45,000 for that program for middle and high schools, and then the remainder is for the SRO officers, which is about 3.8 million. That's how we have it allocated currently. And then we also have an additional 1.1 million from the general fund that's non-safe school dollars that we have allocated for the SRO contracts, which we have done in the past.
So, I'm sorry, Kelly, did you say that the alternative to suspension program at middle and high schools is 45,000 district-wide?
Oh, sorry, that was 149,000.
Oh, 100.
Sorry.
Okay.
I looked, missed a 1 in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, mhm. Any other questions?
The efficiency study, when are we going to actually get to see that?
I am not sure when the final draft will be provided. Dr. Atkins, have you gotten an update on that?
I don't. I know I have a conversation with, with Mr. Gibson, I believe, scheduled for Wednesday, tomorrow, so if he's able to provide me a date at that time, I'll be able to provide that immediately to the board, so you may receive that tomorrow. As I understand it, I believe that all of the edits have been submitted to Mr. Gibson, and, you know, last time, I knew that there was only one outstanding department, so if that department's got its edits in, then they just have to put that together and get it right back to us. So, it's a pretty, pretty complete document. I would ima, I couldn't, I can't believe it would take any more than a week or two to turn around from today.
And then, for the internal auditor, what is the cost versus in-house? Like, what would be the savings to contract out?
I really can't answer that question because a job description and a job study would have to be provided in order to come up with an in-house cost, and then we can look at the out, the cost to outsource it.
Now, is this the same position that they had years ago and that they, that they did away with? Is it the same or is it different? That's what I didn't understand, really, that much information on it.
We did have an internal board auditor before. I don't know the requirements that were in that, was, you know, that, that position had to fulfill before. I would assume that it would be similar to that, but this position actually has certain requirements that are written in statute that it must fulfill.
Okay, thank you.
Mhm.
And if I understand correctly, one of the reasons for outsourcing it is the fact that because of those requirements, not every auditor is going to have all of those strings, correct? Any other questions? Okay, comments? Thank you so much, Ms. Letcher.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. I'm here to present an update on the three capital projects currently in place. Let me bring it up on the screen.
That one's, that one's, that one's worse to read.
It's ridiculous.
It's clearer for me than that one. It's the, the 10.
Here we go. Currently, I'm not going to read the bullet points for you, but I want to give you some quick highlights for the product site. We've received our certificate of occupancy and substantial completion on June 11th for Building A. Furniture began being delivered to Building A on the 11th. Unpacking, about 90% of the furniture is being displaced. We currently are anticipating a certificate of occupancy and substantial completion for Building B, which is the cafeteria and gymnasium building next week, and the following week, Building C, which is the auditorium building as well, followed by D Building. We've got water service now from BSU for A Building, the main academic building, and the gymnasium cafeteria building currently of BSU. C Building is in conjunction with the closing of the lot split that we did, providing BSU with some well points, and we expect that closing to be shortly happening in the next couple of weeks. The gymnasium floor is complete. There's some pictures I'm going to show you. MMM High School, we've met with the representative from the local HOA and some of his board members. We presented them with the site plan, proposed site plan that we've developed, both with transportation and internally, and they loved it. They loved the fact that we pushed the football fields towards 82. They did ask us if we could help accommodate some of their drainage issues, and we explained to them why that was not possible because there's two separate basins between our property line and the adjacent, and they were, they were pleased with the explanation we gave, and we assured them that we were going to do our best to maintain water, maintain water, stormwater on our site to prevent any potential flooding for their sites. So, we're going to do a more formal presentation to that board, I believe, in July. I'm not certain of the date. Lehigh Senior High School addition is underway. We have begun the outdoor dining canopy. That's proceeding. We have engaged with the architect, and we have met with school staff, both curriculum, adult education, and ESE for both MMM in Lehigh, coming up with design sketches, and we're moving forward. We've got preliminary designs for Lehigh Senior that I believe I'll be able to share with our, our construction advisory committee very shortly. And let's see. That's a picture recently of the front entry. We just planted the palm trees. It's coming together. I want you all to be aware of that paving is the last critical component, and we have been paving feverishly this week. Paving makes the whole site come together. Unfortunately, all the local paving companies shut down for the July 4th holiday, so as of Friday, they will shut down through the holiday week, but this place will be getting asphalted like a maniac right after the July 4th holiday, well in, in advance of the opening of the school. That's the cafeteria building. All the equipment is in place, ready to go. We're doing final cleaning. There's your gymnasium with the school logo. Bleachers are in, showers are in, lockers are in, all the, right now, we're in the punchless phase, and it actually came out beautiful. And you can see to the lower right, the equipment that the principal procured with his FF and E funds, all set up, ready to go, and there's the football fields, very green. Typical classrooms, this is one of our wet science classrooms and our laboratories. Some of the integral tables that go with the laboratory furniture, and that's the presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Patrica.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. The, the gymnasium, what you can't see in that picture is when you look up, the circle things in the ceiling, are those the air conditioning vents?
That's correct.
The air conditioning vents are blue, and then the beams are green.
Correct.
And that was the contractor's suggestion, I guess, and no extra cost, but it adds like a real nice feeling to the, to the gymnasium.
No, we, we picked the colors, and since there's a partnership with FGCU, that just happened to marry with the school colors, everything worked out, and it really pops. And those circular duckworks are called duck socks. It's something we utilize, and we started at a Dunbar Gymnasium. Super quiet air, super even distribution of air. It's a real nice product.
Yeah, the whole, the whole thing is really, I think I was out there last, last week or the week before, the whole thing is coming together incredibly well, so.
It has a nice ambiance when you walk in there.
It's definitely a, a school that that community can be very proud of.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
No, but if you'd like to go to the change order report, item 3 in that same section, I can answer any questions if you have any on the change order report.
Sounds great. Any questions?
I just, just a quick comment. You know, when I, I visited, I know there had been a little bit of back and forth around the Black Box Theater, and, you know, just, just as a former school principal, I looked at the space, first of all, I was amazed at the size. It's, it's a, it's a very large space, very cool to look at. I mean, you, you can really see the versatility there. That's where, what I started thinking about as I'm looking at the space, the opportunity to do a wide variety of things. You can, you know, you can bring it in, make it an auditorium with the bleachers and the stage and all of that, but then you can back that off and, and have, you know, science fair, wrestling meets, whatever you want to do. It's just an extremely versatile building, and, and of course, acoustics are going to be in there, so you can do presentations, and then you have the catwalk, so if you're doing stage shows, you know, it's just, it's just really turned out way nicer than I ever imagined, so I just wanted, if you haven't had an opportunity to see that, and I know that sometimes you'll get questions about that, I would highly recommend checking that space out. It's, it's, it's pretty, pretty cool.
Agreed. Thank you.
Black Box is amazing.
Yes, ma'am. We're going to utilize that same design with the direction from the superintendent in MMM as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay. Mr. Parfitt, Mr. Demming.
We're here today to update you, a short update on safety and security, and we're going to have a, a very intense one at the end of next, the next meeting, which is a month away from now. I did want to say, I was out at Bonita High School this week for a meeting with parents and a group on naming rights, and there's a lot of opportunity out there for naming rights, and it's really, it's really nice, and that school is, is going to be a show, show school for the district. It's very functional, it's beautiful, so if you haven't gotten out there just recently, now they're putting furniture and stuff in it, it is kind of amazing. And that one thing you talked about, Ms. Patriga, in the gym, that, that does make the whole gym stand out. So, anyway, getting to what I'm supposed to be talking about is safety and security. And right now is a real exciting time. I guess you could put it in safety and security. A lot of things are changing. The first thing is, you know, after, after Parkland, the state came down with the, every school shall have an officer in their school if you're going with resource officers, and we are doing that. Every school will have a school resource officer. The county is no longer covering all the districts. The county is going to cover unincorporated Lee County, which is approximately 39 as you look at it now, but they're adding, what a lot of people don't know, they're adding an extra SRO in the big high schools. So they're adding another 10, oh, not 10, five more SROs to make quite a few SROs that they're handling. So they're, you know, they're in the mid-40s. Then, we had to figure out what's going on in the two other major districts, which happens to be Cape Coral and Fort Myers, because those are city, and both of those groups have stepped up, and they're going to do the exact same contract as the sheriff's department's done, which is we pay 50% of the cost of the SRO up to $50,000, and they've agreed to that, and the city of Cape Coral will be providing 19 officers for 19 schools, and I believe the Fort Myers PD is 17. Now, that excludes, as you, you've seen, that excludes one little area. We have a couple unincorporated, but they're not really unincorporated because they've become either cities or villages or the town of Fort Myers Beach. And right now, there will be an SRO in those schools. We have not completed the negotiation on how they're exactly going to get paid for. Right now, there's a bit of, we are up for our 50%. We've already said, we're paying our 50%. Now, we're going between the city of Bonita or, and Estero and Fort Myers Beach on how those are going to get paid, whether it's going to be all the sheriff's department or all those cities and villages are paying. That, that is an ongoing work right now, but we have decided to go with SROs because they're proven, they do a good job, they make the kids in the community feel safe, and that's what we have to do. We have to make our children feel safe. If we can't make our children feel safe, they're not going to learn, and the kids nowadays have a lot more to worry about than we went to school, or when I went to school. A lot of you are a lot younger than me. When I went to school, we never thought about security, not a thought. Our biggest, my biggest fear was how hard football practice was going to be. Had, had nothing to do with security. These kids really do have things to worry about. We've got to make it where they can go to school and they can enjoy what they do in school and, and bring joy back into school, but school should really be a joyful time. All right, so, SROs, you know, we're going to have them, they're going to do a great job like they've always done, we're going to work. We're going to work with the three different organizations, and we're going to hopefully blend that into one organization where it'll work as smoothly as one did. That's going to take a lot of work, but we've got Rick Parfitt here. Rick Parfitt's going to get it done. He knows all the police chiefs really well, and, as we all do, because they're really good people. And we're going to work with them, and we're going to make, we're going to make this work. So, I wanted to make sure that you didn't have any worries about that. Moving from SROs to our student supervision protocol.
Mr. Demming, just, I just a thought. It's, you know, one of the things I'd ask you to do, and you and Mr. Parfitt, and I know Mr. Dotick, to kind of check on what some of the other districts were doing, and you might want to let the board know, and I'll provide that information. We can provide a summary to that, but while you're here...
We've got it.
It's just interesting, I think.
Yeah, the two, our two big counties right next to us. Charlotte County is going to be split between the, their Sheriff's Department and Punta Gorda Police. And what they're doing is, they've always paid thirty-five percent of their deputies. They're still going to pay thirty-five percent of their deputies as of right now.
The district pays thirty-five percent, or the...
The district pays thirty-five percent. But, it's actually going up, and it's going to be more, because now, all the new ones, and now, they don't have as many elementaries as we do. So, all the elementaries are put, the school district will be paying a hundred percent for the new ones.
For the additional ones.
The additional ones.
The additional ones, okay.
Now, Collier County's a little different. Collier County is giving them their entire school safety budget that comes from the state, and they are going to provide all SROs, the Sheriff's Department, to all schools, including the charter schools. Money-wise, we don't have a whole lot of information on what other districts are doing, but there's a lot of districts doing different things on whether using SROs and things like that. But we'll be sending you printout of what other districts are doing. But those are our two close districts.
I just have a quick question regarding Collier County. So, they have given them all of that money?
Safe school money, yeah.
Yeah. Is Collier County government needing to put money in to assist it, or was that able to cover the whole thing for them?
Uh, no, they're paying for probably more than fifty percent.
They're paying, but county is putting...
County's putting in whatever the safe schools money doesn't cover, they're going to cover it all.
So, they weren't able to do a hundred percent with it? I didn't think so. Okay, thank you.
And that's county sheriff? It's not like Naples Police Department?
No, we...
No, the county sheriff handles all schools in the county.
So, just to give you a little bit of, of just a couple of other examples, Sarasota is opting to do its own police department. Hillsborough looks like a fifty-fifty split between, it's a MOU with Tampa Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. Flagler is, I guess, the Sheriff's Office proposing a fifty-fifty split. District pays, right now, district pays twenty-nine percent of the middle and high schools. Sheriff's Department's proposing a fifty-fifty split. District looking for, hopefully, a sixty-forty, sixty being the Sheriff's Department, forty being the district. And so, you, and I'll send you this information of what we're finding. You know, Pasco fifty-fifty split. You know, so you're finding just a lot of different things that are going on, but if there's any common thread through it, you see more that seem to be landing in that, in that fifty-fifty area of the districts that we were able to contact and, and provide prior to this briefing.
Yes.
Ms. Juvenelli? Okay, but not everybody is doing SROs. There, there, some do the Guardian, and they're offsetting...
There's a few. I know Clay County's doing Guardian.
And you said Polk County is...
Polk is...
Is looking at, well, I think you have a Sheriff's Office and also the Guardian program for the balance. So, Polk County is going to do apparently a mix between the two.
And, and so is Pinellas is doing a mix.
Right. I was going to say, I know there are some bigger ones that...
Pinellas is doing actually all three programs. And I don't exactly know how that works, but they're doing all three.
I'd like to see how, how that looks.
Okay.
Yeah.
A little more of Pinellas, they're, they didn't have any real coverage in their elementary, so those are all going to be Guardians.
Most of the schools are SROs, and they have an in-house police department. So, school safety officers, SROs, and Guardian. That's how that's working there. Okay?
Okay, that's good to know.
I have a couple other counties, too. I can give you an update on Swanee County, which is very small, is SROs and two Guardians in each school, which is kind of a combination. Dr. Atkins mentioned Flagler. I will tell you, in Flagler, only one of their cities contributes dollars. They have more than one city to the SRO program. Indian River, the municipality there does not contribute, but they have SROs through the Sheriff's Office. Citrus County is SROs. I'm not sure about the percentage of funding. Marion County is going with SROs this school year, but information that Mr. Martin and I have received is that they're going to convert to the Guardian program next year. Pinellas, we already talked about, and that's the information I have, so...
Why would they, the Guardian program, is that less expensive? Is that, is that their, so I just want to, for the, for the community, I want them to understand the difference, because I'm, I mean, I don't really understand it, so I'm just trying to understand it all.
Yeah.
I have lengthy comments that explain the difference between the two that I was going to do during the order.
That's fine.
Here?
Yeah.
I mean, this, today?
Today.
Okay. I think it's just important for the community. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There is a definite difference, so if you're going to go over that, that'll be great. All right, Mr. Parfitt's going to go over the Safety and Security Departmental reorganization for you.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Part of our plan has been and is, is working towards reorganizing the Safety and Security Department, even though we have folks that work and have strengths in, in different areas, especially as it relates to compliance issues of fire, safety, ESREF, asbestos, and a number of different things. Our department's more encompassing than that. So, the reorganization is that we've eliminated one of, one of two coordinator positions, and in, in that place, we've added three zone security managers, which you have a job description of, attached. And these zone security managers would be responsible as between the, my office and the folks in the field. These individuals would assist the schools, obviously, with their emergency response plans. They would assist with, with the risk assessments as we go forward. They would be our liaison with the school resource officers and also the school security specialists, the, the school security folks that are currently in our buildings right now. And not all the buildings have those. We, we hope to have these folks to be able to train on threat assessment, mental health awareness, emergency response protocols, and, and to serve on our threat assessment teams as necessary also. We're going to use these folks also to assist in, in added site safety drills that, that are required by statute, and those include lockdown drills, evacuation, and newer drills on active shooter and hostage situations. So, these, these folks would be helping those schools as well in those areas. The, the plan is that these individuals would check in to our district office here, and each being assigned to a particular zone, one of the three zones, and would respond on a daily basis to, obviously, pressing issues and also just normal visits and inspections to those schools in those zones.
Comments? Ms. Patrica, Ms. Fisher?
So, on the security specialists, are you going to be developing uniform training for them? When I, when I hear security specialists, I think the guys in yellow jackets at high schools, is that...
Yes, that's correct.
So, will you be developing uniform training for them?
Yes, we, we, they, they had some training. We're looking at, at that, talking to the Police Academy folks here to tweak that, especially in light of the mental health awareness, threat assessment approach that we have to go with, yes.
And then, will there be, is there a uniform job description for them? And my last question on that is, to whom do they report? Do they report to the principal, to this security manager, to you? How does that work?
Security specialists. Obviously, they work in a school, so they would have a responsibility to the principals, the building administrators. But it's my understanding that, going forward, these individuals would fall in, in kind of the chain of command of safety and security, and that these zone managers would be the folks that would be on the operational level to supervise them.
Right. And then, the last question I have that's a little unrelated to this, is I heard that you created a Safety and Security Committee or something? Did I not hear that correctly? Was that a rumor?
We have a, we have a Safety Committee, but I created a SRO Advisory Committee.
There was some meeting somewhere that was open to the public and...
Oh, yes, that was the Safety Committee.
That was the Safety Committee. Who, who's on that committee? What's the purpose? Like, what, what are we doing there?
That committee is, is established by contract. The Talc and Spalc each have representatives that are appointed. The superintendent assigns an additional, I believe, four to eight people. So, there, there could be up to twenty-four people on this committee. And it's a typical Safety Committee that, that brings issues to, to us, the district of concerns they have on a whole lot of different safety-related items.
Great, thanks.
In addition to that, schools are also, they also have a school safety committee.
Every school.
And, yeah, every single school has one, and that committee, kind of a similar charge as the district committee, it's just on a school level.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. So, we eliminated one coordinator position, and we are looking at three zone manager positions. So, what's the cost involved with that? I mean, how much did we save on eliminating the coordinator, and how much are the three zone managers going to cost?
Well, from the, the operations side in general, there were some additional savings, not just from the Safety and Security Department. So, there were some, some operational savings in unfilled positions, but from the, the cost of the coordinator versus the security managers, zone security managers, it, it probably eliminates, the coordinator position would probably equal close to two, two zone managers in, in costs.
So, what is the cost of one zone manager?
Uh, the, the initial salary was about forty, forty-two thousand.
Yeah, forty-two.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I missed that. Okay. I didn't see that. Okay. So, then, the, the Safety Committee is Talc and Spalc reps plus eight appointments by the superintendent, and they report from the perspective of the school regarding concerns or...
Yes.
Suggestions?
Yes.
And then, for school safety committees, how are those chosen and staffed? I mean, like, who's on the school Safety Committee, and is it consistent across the district?
I, I think generally, they are. They're, they're comprised by the, the building administrator, but they would involve a building supervisor, a school administrator, faculty, a, a small group of people on each campus.
So, then, then there's no special criteria or talent or interest that a person would have to be to become a member of a school Safety Committee?
No.
It's just whoever the principal picks?
Or whoever signs up.
Whoever volunteers to do it.
Whoever volunteers, okay.
Because it's a voluntary position, it's not a paid position.
But typically, you know, being a principal who did appoint those folks, it's, the, the people that, that the majority of us would appoint would be those individuals that would really have a direct interest in, in this area. As example, in our school, you had, typically, your assistant principal responsible for the building and discipline. You've got your staff, timeout room. You've got safety and security supervisors, which buildings have. Those are the people that do in the bus ramp and so forth. You've got people, the building supervisor was mentioned. You also have typically faculty representation as well. You know, I'd had typically a member from each, in a middle school, you know, we're divided into teams, and you typically had a team representative that would serve on that committee in addition to the staff that, that I just, just mentioned. And they cover a wide variety of items, and has been my experience, to include building safety concerns and issues. You know, it could be just unsafe, unsafe, you know, parts of the building. It could also be ESREF protocol. You know, that's where you, you get the warnings that come out about the amount of paper that you're supposed to have on, on your walls to discipline policy. You know, how we enter the building, exit the building, and also, you know, the, the safety evacuation plans, you know, if lockdown, you know, fire drills and things like that. All that stuff is usually discussed at the Safety Committee. I will say that, since all of this, you know, it's something that was kind of common practice for, I was a building, when I was a building principal, I think all of this has kind of revitalized that effort at the building level, because I think, you know, in some buildings, that practice of having those monthly safety meetings might have fallen by the wayside, but this has been, you know, something that's brought this back into full gear. And same, I could say, for the District Safety Committee, which had also kind of, you know, for a while, had, had taken a recess, but now it's back and operational.
So, then, I guess my last thing would be, looking at, looking at this situation where we are really focusing on safety in our schools. Our school resource officers are community police officers, and so, in having an opportunity to build relationships and get information, that helps them also in the community, because this is more than a school issue or a school problem. And my concern is that it looks like it's being lumped onto schools, but really, it takes a partnership. And, and school, actually, if you look at the research, is the safest place for kids to be. More kids are killed in their homes and neighborhoods than are in schools. So, I really think that, I, I guess my question is, how are we communicating with our partners in the community to really emphasize this and to get everybody on board? You know, is there, or are we just saying, okay, we'll do it all? Because that, I don't think serves the purpose.
No, we, we've had a, a number of meetings with, with the, some elected officials, and also some administrators from those municipalities, and obviously with the Sheriff's Office, and have stressed that importance. And I think most people generally agree that that is the case, that it is a community issue. I, I think that unfortunately, it comes down to the funding. I don't, I didn't hear, I, I heard comments that, you know, this was a school district problem and, and unfunded mandate to us, but generally, most of them understood that this was a community issue. The, especially from the law enforcement agencies, because you're exactly right. They're, they're, they're very aware that there's a lot of information that they gain by being in the schools. They, they prevent a lot of criminal activity by being in our schools. So, they, they understand the value of it. I think sometimes we have to sell it maybe a little harder to some of the officials in, in those communities. And unfortunately, they don't have established law enforcement or police departments, so...
Right.
That's, that's where we're, where the controversy is coming from.
Exactly. So, today, I spoke to a news reporter who said that the governor said that the schools are sitting on money and that they need to ante up and cover the cost. So, how do we respond to that?
My, my response to it is that, you know, governor does not have really a, a full understanding of, of our school's budget. One of the things that, that I would say also is that we do provide all, just about all of our...
our safe schools categorical, with that small exception that goes to alternative suspension programs, but all of it to the SRO program. In addition to that, we've allocated a little over a million dollars that comes out of the general fund that is over and above. And if you've looked at the tracking that across the course of time, our allocation from a district perspective has continued to increase over the years in terms of the SRO. That is not the case from the state level. The state level has actually decreased the amount of dollars it has put toward SRO programs or safe schools categorical until there was a tragedy in Parkland. And then, all of a sudden, they are now adding more dollars. So if you look at where we are putting our priorities versus where others have put the priorities, I say that we have our priorities squared away, because we've, you know, we've continued to increase the amount of funding in that area. In addition to that, I think it's important that, another issue is charter schools. Charter schools do receive safe schools categorical dollars, and that is allocated based on enrollment. They also receive a general fund dollars based on FTE. And like us, like the district, we expect the charter schools to use dollars from its general fund and also the dollars from its safe school categoricals to at least make a move or an effort toward trying to secure some type of, whether it's SRO, which is what we say right now, SROs is what's supported here in Lee County, to use those dollars in support of that for charter schools. So I do know that there are opinions out there, but we are doing what I believe strongly is the safest option. It is using a proven entity. Law enforcement has been there for us for many, many, many years, and they've always stood by our side. And I really have a comfort that we, as a school district, are partnering with the sheriff's department, who's been a phenomenal partner. And I will have to say that Chief Diggs of Fort Myers and Hanley of Cape Coral and the city of Cape Coral and Fort Myers have also really done us proud. I think they know the priority that this community has on securing its schools and community, and they've really stepped up the plate. So I really appreciate the efforts of them. To sit back and throw in with an unproven guardian program to save dollars, I don't think is in our best interest at this time. We obviously will continue to study the issue, but I would not recommend being the first district out there on the cutting edge of the guarding program, because you're talking about student safety.
Thank you for that, Dr. Atkins. And I think that that is a strong message, and I think that we need to continue to send that and publicize that to the community, because people do have questions. So I'm happy for your strong response.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm finished.
Anyone else? Okay.
Well, Ms. Markin? Or do we, we save those for good of the order? Or do you want to? Does anyone have anything for good of the order that would appropriately fit during this time?
So I would like to talk a little bit about the work that's been done with the communities who are not in the unincorporated, who are incorporated, Lee County areas. We've had one city council say that not vote, but say at the dais unanimously, they will not provide funding for SROs, and that's Benita. And then, we've had one city council, and this is all secondhand from the newspaper and from people that I've spoken to on the various councils. Estero has not, is concerned, because we have not approached them formally to ask for funding. What we have done as a district is Dr. Atkins has had, and has met with the city managers. Staff have met with staff to discuss funding. And at the staff level, we're at an impasse. And so, the question is, what do we want to do as a board with respect to either drawing in our political partners or getting a formal acknowledgement from them that they have no role to play in law enforcement, because they contract law enforcement out to the sheriff's office? So that we can provide appropriate direction to our staff about how to move forward, because right now, we're at a point where staff is talking to the sheriff's office, and we haven't got something from the cities.
I do want to mention, you know, publicly, that I did have a conversation with Mike Scott recently relative to the municipalities in question, and he has assured me that the school district of Lee County will have SROs in those buildings. So, you know, the law says we partner with law enforcement, and that's what we did, and that's the information that I have directly from Sheriff Scott.
So I guess, yes, go ahead.
I don't feel like staff, at least, has any responsibility beyond exactly what you just said. The law requires us, the school district, to partner with law enforcement. We partnered with Cape Coral. We partnered with Fort Myers. We partnered with Sanibel. We partnered with the sheriff's department. By partnering with those agencies, it necessarily includes the funding, the funding elected bodies for those agencies. So the police department in Cape Coral brought their budget to Cape Coral. City council, they approved it. Same happened, or is happening, in Fort Myers. Sanibel, for everybody's memory, has always had their own SRO. And, you know, in terms of what's happening with Benita, Estero, Fort Myers Beach, their police is the sheriff's department. I don't think it makes sense for staff to approach them, because that's not what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to approach law enforcement. Now, I can see both sides. I've been talking about this. I live there. These are my people. This is my area. I've talked to Larry Keiker on the county commission, and I understand, they made a policy decision. They made a policy decision to change the funding of SROs, take it out of the general fund and put it into the MSU. They are perfectly within their rights to make that policy change. On the other side, we have municipalities who have the feeling that a county policy was changed that implicates their budgets without a conversation taking place. And that's where I think that we, as a district, can bring the parties together. When I say as a district, I mean as elected representatives, one member of each of these agencies. Closed-door meeting, not a public comment kind of thing. Just get one person from each of those councils, one person from here, one person from the sheriff's department, together. The sheriff probably isn't even necessary. Get them together and have them talk. Because what's happening now is, I've got the county talking to me here, and I've got the municipalities talking to me here, but nobody's talking to each other. Kind of like what happened with Representative Rodriguez's editorial this weekend. He didn't come to me and talk to me about the district's decision to go with SROs instead of the guardian. He just put it out there in the paper, and I'm finding the lack of communication between elected officials in Lee County to be very counterproductive. And it's making it very difficult for us to work together. The number-one thing that I have heard in every single public comment at every one of these council meetings is, this is an unfunded mandate. SROs are absolutely necessary in our schools. So I think we could walk into a meeting with our fellow elected officials with that as a common basis of understanding, and walk out of there, working together to lobby our state legislation, or state delegation, to stop unfunded mandates, stop the erosion of local control, or what they call home rule, and really start to work together in Lee County. And I know that's very naive, but that's what I would hope to accomplish.
Well, can we just, well, I guess, the question is then, do we want to engage at all with our political partners in a formal way? With Benita, Estero, and Fort Myers Beach? Or do we not want to engage with them at all? They are, certainly in the case of Estero, they're saying, "It's our problem, because we haven't engaged with them." I mean, I just don't, I just don't know where to go with this. And I would say, in response to you, you can pick one person from this board, one person from the county commission, one person from Benita, one person from Estero. Put them all in a room behind a closed door, and none of them have the authority to make decisions on behalf of their groups. So I'm not sure how, you know, selecting one person from each group advances the ball at all.
Ms. Fisher?
I actually agree with Chris. This is a community issue, and the community needs to weigh in. And what other than the leadership doing that? I mean, right now, it's, we're making the decision for our community. And I think that, I think the community needs to make the decision for the community. And ever how that looks, if it's like Chris said, I think we have to collaborate somehow. And I agree. And I don't know how that looks. I mean, but I think it's important.
I see, but I agree with what Kathleen said. Nobody, if you bring in the one, nothing can happen. Maybe what's really necessary is to just do a workshop with all elected officials. Now, it'd be hard to do that during the month of July, because that's when everybody's taking their hiatus.
I wouldn't have any difficulty representing this board in a room and saying, "This is what this council member believes." It's about a conversation. It's not about authority. It's not about making a decision. It's about coming together and having a conversation, trying to find common ground, and then going back to your boards and having that discussion with your boards. A public meeting with the public there, the things that these people are saying to me about each other will never be said in public. And Greg, I'm sorry, Dr. Atkins, can attest to the fact that sometimes, you have difficult conversations behind closed doors.
You do.
That allow you to come together and understand where the other party is coming from. At this point, that's not occurring in Lee County. And I feel like if you don't put opportunity in your path, you're never going to achieve anything. So why not try?
Mr. Toyber?
Thank you. And I appreciate Chris's willingness to get in there and play mediator, but to me, I see it as, you know, the district has, this mandate came down from the state legislature, and it was unmanned, you know, unfunded, and they said, "Just go do it." So, and the auspice, and it falls on us, but it also falls on the law enforcement to do it as well. And so, we've stepped up. The law enforcement has stepped up. And so, now, it's the law enforcement, the county sheriff responds to the county commission. Their unincorporated Lee County is taken care of, but they're also, they're in a relationship with incorporated entities. That's their relationship between Fort Myers Beach and Estero and Benita and the county commission. For us to get drawn into a political issue, to me, we said, "We're here. We'll figure out a way to pay our 50%. We've done it. Now, we're trying to figure out how to solve their problems. We've got kids to teach. We've got resources. Our resources have to be spent on making our schools safe and doing things." Other than, that's an issue that, look, we've covered our part. The sheriff's covered their part. Now, it's the part of the county commission as elected officials and the cities of Benita, Estero, and Fort Myers Beach to figure it out. And for us to get involved in that, to have us be the mediators, or us to bring in the, you know, the rod or the staff, and to bring in parties to negotiate, that's not our job. The county commission is responsible for funding the sheriff's department. They need to take the lead as elected officials, as county commissioners, and figure it out with the people that they've contracted with, with their MOUs, and figure it out. And to have us come to it, to me, that's kind of the tail wagging the dog. And to me, it's like, guys, you know, here's the issue. It's a community issue. We've, we're part of the community. We've done our part. The sheriff said, "We've done our part." Now, you've got some factions that need to figure out their part and come together. And if they want us to say, "Well, all of this is bad, because it's unfunded," I don't have a problem with us getting together as a group to go to the legislature and say, you know, "What are you thinking? Why are you doing stuff without any factual data that the SROs is the answer?" You know, all these other things, you know, Rodriguez writes an editorial, you know, I kind of take it as, you know, it's like, wait a minute. You created this debacle. You're the ones, without any forethought, without any communication, just said, "We have the solution." Threw it out on the street and said, "Meh, figure it out." And then, walk away, and then have the audacity to second-guess how we're doing something that they didn't give us tools to do it with. So, I mean, the Rodriguez thing is just a joke, but as far as locally, our local officials have done a good job, and I think our county commission can do a good job. But for us to get pulled into it, I just think that that's, we're getting involved in political battles, and we've always said, this board has always said, "We're not political. We're about doing what's right for kids. We've done our part. We're willing to assist." But for us to play mediator, I have a problem with it.
So I guess my question has been maybe looking at it a different way. Do we simply just go to the various cities and say, "Look, we know that there will be SROs in each of our schools, in each of your communities come the start of school. We are paying for 50% of the SRO presence in your schools, and we will continue to negotiate with the sheriff's office with respect to the funding for the balance," and just let it go with that? That puts them on, no?
So why should we negotiate with them when we're paying our share?
Right. No, I'm just saying, we're not negotiating. I'm just saying, we take ourselves out of it by notifying them of the fact that we've put in our 50%. We're working with the sheriff's office, because they represent law enforcement on the other side. But at least, formally, disengage ourselves from the cities that are engaged with the county, and just stay with the sheriff.
Right. Because the cities, where the change was made by the county commission, and if the cities are saying they don't have the money, they need to work that out with the county commission.
Exactly.
And the sheriff.
And they need to stay out of it, because it's a political debacle.
A really great answer would be if the state would give us the money we need to put school resource officers in our schools. Wouldn't that be a great answer?
Because SROs are proven. Guardians are not. You know, we need to go with something that we know is proven. And they need to work out their MOUs with the county regarding their law enforcement, and maybe if they need to adjust their contracts, so be it. They need to consider that. But...
So I guess what I'm trying to come from, how do we, how do we, as Steve said, pull ourselves, that they're trying to put us between? And we need to disengage in a form, I believe, we need to disengage in a formal way from this. How do we do it?
Well...
Mr. Toyber, and then I have a thought.
Again, you know, our sheriff is doing what they need to do, and we're doing what we need to do, because it's required by law to put the SROs in. So we're gonna do that. At some point, you know, the sheriff is going to go to people who write him the check and say, "Guys, I need, I need help." That's between the sheriff, how he gets funded at that point is really to go into his purse strings to county commission. It falls on the county commission. Then, they need to either say, make it work, or they need to go to the cities and say, "Hey, we need..." You know, it really falls, this problem is a, it's a community problem, and that half of the community falls on the county commissioners. And the county commissioners have to step up and deal with, they wrote the MOUs, they made those policy decisions to change the allocation funding, how they did that to the MSU's, MTSU. So how they want to do it, it's, that's their, I don't want to micromanage it. I don't want to tell the county commission how to do their job.
No, I know.
And I feel that we're being asked to do that.
I know.
But again, I'm sort of back where the Estero city council made the point that we hadn't talked to them at all about this mandate and what was gonna happen in their schools and who was gonna pay for it. And so, the question is, you know, how do we assure that community, Estero, that we are responding to the mandate by doing our part, and we expect Estero's law enforcement to...
Estero doesn't have law enforcement.
I know.
So, I mean, Estero has basically, two or three of their councilmen requested that
one of us show up at one of their meetings. And I'm comfortable going there and saying, you know, "We did our part under the law. We worked with law enforcement agencies." This is really a policy issue between you and the county at this point. I mean, I'm comfortable doing that.
I believe we need some type of a written statement that's a very clear, definite piece, so that one person, so there's common language. So it's going out, whether it be drawn up by our school board attorney in conjunction with staff or our board chair, somebody. Have something to...
But I guess I just don't understand. Estero advocated their responsibility of law enforcement to the sheriff. We've got, so they're not in the pit, they're not in the loop. They chose to give it to the sheriff. So we dealt with the sheriff. We're done. If they have a question, go to where they've got their issue. They've removed themselves from this loop. They said they haven't been contacted, because we're not contacting them, because they don't have law enforcement to contact. And for us to contact on a political level, again, that becomes a political issue that I don't, I don't support. To me, we did the... To me, we did, the superintendent got with the sheriff's department who's responsible. Those law enforcement entities cover those three areas. That's it. We did our job. Now, if this if the Astero City Council or Benita City Council have a question, pick up the phone and call the sheriff because that's who their agreement is with, not with us. And and for us to get involved and to write them a letter or to speak to them or attend to a meeting, you're pulling your us in a situation where it's not, we have no, there is no privity between us and the and the city council in this in this topic, in my mind.
Privy, eh?
No privy.
There you go with that lawyer language again.
I agree with that.
Madam Chair?
Oh, you're chairing the meeting, so.
Well, yes, I but but, you know, any thoughts and so? Okay, so in general, I believe that the general, we've got mixed consensus. We don't have a unified consensus of where to go.
No, I can.
You can agree with what's with Steve?
Please convince me.
Ms. Juvanelli?
Dr. Atkins, can you weigh in? I'm just, I mean, everybody's kind of said something here, but you haven't really.
Well, I think that.
You've been the one talking to everybody, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Let me just give you, from my perspective, we did, we did what the law required us to do, which is obviously reached out to law enforcement. We started right out of the gates, actually, a couple of weeks after the law was passed and and worked with the sheriff's department. They have been absolutely, continue to be amazing partners. You know, they then they went to work right after that to make sure we were in compliance with law for the remainder portion of the year. In the meantime, we had, you know, Chief Diggs reached out, and we met a number of times with him, with Said as well, and then Chief Hanley and John Zerlag over the city of Cape Coral. In addition to that, I know Mr. Moore, Mr. Parfit, Mr. Demming have had numerous, and Mr. Blerton has been involved, numerous conversations with Steve Sarkozy, the the village manager down at the village, Astero Village. The addition to that, Arlene Hunter, who's the interim manager of Benita Springs, we've had conversations with her. In addition to that, met with Arlene and Peter Flynn at one point, Mr. Blerton and I, and and I can't remember, Jerry, if you were there or not, but we met with him and discussed funding. We also, I had a conversation with Nick Betos over the phone regarding funding. And then we decided to bring all staff together a couple of weeks ago, and that was attended by Steve Sarkozy, Arlene Hunter, Roger DiJolay. And Roger and I have had multiple conversations as well on the phone. And again, that's where we did not come to consensus regarding the staffing. I do have a tendency to believe that that we did, we went beyond our part in that we made all of these connections and meetings in an effort to try to bring some type of closure to the funding issue and, you know, and to culminate in that meeting that we had with all staff. And that's at at that point, I didn't feel that we could go any further as a staff and felt that this was a an issue that that needed to come back to to this board in terms of what the board would need to do relative to the the other elected bodies.
Dr. Atkins, Brian Hammond was also in the original meeting.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I forgot to mention that original meeting that that Mr. Demming, Mr. Parfit attended, and that was at the sheriff's office. I was not, was not aware of that meeting until the literally the day of the meeting. That was prior, that was prior to.
Was prior, and all the officials from all the entities were there, including Brian Hammond, the village, and Astero, you know, all all of them were there.
So were there any school board members there?
There was not.
Okay.
So I guess we weren't invited.
I got invited, just like Dr. Atkins, the day it happened. They said, be there. I was there.
So that's my point. I mean, that's it's really important to for the community to know that we've had these conversations. I mean, how many more do we need to have?
Exactly.
That's all.
And can I say that, you know, most of the people that I'm talking to on this issue really are good people who really just want what's best for their constituents? And although they might be disagreeing about how to get there, they're going to work it out. They're going to figure it out. So.
Well, and I would say, you know, same thing. When we had our meeting with everyone in the room, you know, we had disagreement, but it was very cordial. It was very professional, and everybody really has, this is a very high interest item. Everybody has, I think, the safety and security of students in mind, but, you know, there are disagreements over over policy and funding, which really, I believe, in my opinion, predate this issue.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay, then we will leave it with that we will make sure everyone is aware that we are providing the 50%. SROs will be there the first day of school. And then if there are funding issues after our 50%, then.
The last thing I want to make all the board and the public aware is that I have asked Dr. Creel and Dr. McCullers to reach out to our charter school partners. I had a conversation with with Colonel Smith yesterday and Chief Holloway. Thank you, the sheriff's department. Again, the funding of the charter school issue is is one that is is critical. So we're hoping that we're going to be able to work with our charter school partners and make sure that we have also coverage assigned to those buildings on the first day of school as well.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to, thank you very much for being willing to stay in the hot.
Well, I've got I've got some comments about Representative Rodriguez's editorial that now might be the right time to talk about. And so you guys can correct anything I say that's incorrect.
And Mary has her hand, okay.
And I was just going to ask because I wanted a little bit more explanation about Mr. Parfit's perception of the Guardian program, but you said you were going to address that and are you still doing that? Okay.
So first of all, I I really hate doing this, and I'm going to ask for consensus from the board at the end of my comments if you feel comfortable putting an editorial in the paper, a fact-based editorial to show the school district's perspective on why we went with SROs instead. I feel like it needs a widespread response, and I really, really hate doing this. I hate sitting at this day as and making public comment to another elected official instead of sitting down and having a conversation. However, a lot of the false impressions that were in that editorial, I feel, need to be addressed. So I read that editorial as a question from Representative Rodriguez, which is, should we provide for student community safety on the cheap? Or should we provide for community and and student safety in a way that we know provides comprehensive coverage for our schools and our communities? We all know we have three options: create a police department, do a Guardian program, or go with SROs. It's my understanding that staff conversations went as follows. Creating a police department is cost prohibitive. We do not have enough time, even if we started on it the moment 7026 passed. We didn't have enough time to create a police department by August 10th. The startup costs alone are astronomical. It would increase our liability insurance. We are not in the business of law enforcement. We are in the business of education. Why would we create our our own police department?
And also worker's comp costs would go up as well. Liability insurance costs would go up, our workers' comp costs would go up.
Our coverage for health insurance, everything.
Everything.
Every time you hire a new employee.
Personal development budget.
So our second option is the Guardian program. That requires 132 hours of training. That is 3.3 weeks of training. That's it. 3.3 weeks of training to to hire an employee and give that employee a gun. 80 hours of that training is firearms training, 16 is precision pistol, eight is simulator exercises, eight is defensive tactics, and 12 is legal issues. Guardian candidates also have to do mental health and diversity training because they would be district employees. We would require that. Nowhere at all in that training do I hear what's best for students. Nowhere in that training do I hear anything about how do you approach a child? What's the best way to?
Exactly.
Ouch. Oh, that just fell on my knee and it hurt. And and the purpose of a Guardian program is to physically stop a shooter after the shooting has started. Teachers and administrators have expressed concern about having armed employees in their schools. And while, you know, the Second Amendment debate might say that they're wrong for feeling that way, it is our reality. We have to look at the potential unrest of our employees when we make any decision that will result in a major change in their work environments, like the district police department. We are not in the business of law enforcement. We are in the business of education. Finally, the Guardian program is completely unvetted. There is no Guardian program in the entire state of Florida. We have no district that we can look to for best practices, and there's no district that we can look to to say, oh, those mistakes were made. We won't make those same mistakes here. I don't think it's appropriate for us to use the children in Lee County as a guinea pig for a program that's unproven. I simply think that's the wrong way to go. Again, I'm going to ask, do we really want to provide for the safety and security of our children and our community on the cheap? I don't I don't think that's the way to go. SROs, on the other hand, are sworn law enforcement officers who are assigned to our schools, fully trained with all of the equipment, departmental support, and training available to police officers. 770 hours is basic training for a police officer. In addition to that, they undergo 40 hours of specific training for working in schools, and then there's continuing education available on top of that through the National Association of School Resource Officers. The Florida arm of that association actually has its convention, I think, in Benita Springs in July. Training topics include the teen brain or understanding the teen brain, de-escalation techniques, being a role model to students, informal counseling techniques, classroom management tools so that officers can speak to students about safety and law enforcement's role in the community. The the purpose, I'm sorry, other training subjects include understanding adolescent development, crisis intervention, environmental designs that are proven to reduce crime. I mean, this is, this is the, the National Association of School Resource Officers has evolved the SRO into a professional unit within a police department. And in Lee County, first-time officers aren't assigned to schools. The sheriff makes sure that they have a couple of years of experience patrolling the streets before he puts them into schools. Yes, SROs are more expensive, but I think in this case, everybody in the community, except for Representative Rodriguez, has indicated that safety is our primary concern, not cost. The SRO program is designed to stop a shooting before it occurs. The Guardian program is meant to respond to somebody after they get on campus. I would prefer to stop not just a shooting, but other crimes. They are not merely sentries or guards standing at the door. They are developing relationships with students and and in the community. So during during breaks, the SROs who are assigned to schools are out patrolling the communities, continuing those relationships that they built with those students during the school year. They continue to work in those communities to solidify those relationships. It's really an amazing, community-pleasing opportunity. They're trained to identify problematic behavior in students, which, as we all know, prevents crime in the community or helps them solve crimes that have already taken place. That is a facet that is completely lost with the Guardian program. They gather intelligence, our younger, our younger children, oh, the other thing I want to talk about is the streamlining of communications. SROs provide streamlined communication. Mike, Sheriff Scott said that, and the way he said it just gave me such great confidence. He said, SROs are just the push of a button away from the full force of the sheriff's department arriving on a school campus in mere minutes. You have guardians on campus, you lose that. It's just another guy calling 911. Our younger students, SROs provide law enforcement socialization, allowing them to get to know law enforcement. They're not the bad guys, they're the good guys, develop relationships that prevents crime as they get older. And our younger students are more streetwise than we give them credit for. Our younger students will often talk to an SRO and and reveal that they've been victimized by parents or other adults in their lives. They witness drug deals in their homes, and they will share, these are elementary school kids. And they'll share that information with SROs. Rob Dotick, how many questions do you get about difficult custody issues for our elementary school students? And SROs provide a safety and security, safety and security there. Now, other counties have decided to go the SRO route. I understand it's six to eight in that range that have decided, I'm sorry, have decided to go the Guardian route. In all of the coverage that I watched, to include actual school board meetings, cost was the driving factor. Cost and/or we can't possibly hire and train enough SROs before the beginning of the school year. This is a cost-driven, it's not a quality-driven decision, it's a cost-driven decision. We have a community, we just discussed this, we have a community that's willing to pay 50%. And we're thankful for that. Some SRO, some districts are using a hybrid model where they're putting SROs in middle and high schools and guardians in elementary schools. I don't know how you make that quality decision.
I don't know how you do it.
Like, is the life of a middle and a high schooler more important than that of an elementary school? Does an elementary school child not justify the cost of an, like, how how do we make that kind of a quality decision? I don't know that we can. Rick Parfit, Mr. Parfit, President of the Florida Chapter of the Association of Threat Assessment Professionals, strongly recommends SROs in every school. Is that a fair assessment?
That's correct.
He's worked with law enforcement in the area. He believes guardians are a subpar alternative for Lee County. He can only speak to Lee County, but he has reached out to law enforcement across the state in making this recommendation to the superintendent. 7026 is a joint effort between the sheriff's department and the school district. The sheriff's department and the school district have come together and decided SROs are the best option for our community. I guess the the other thing that I wanted to touch on was the funding. Dr. Atkins, you mentioned, but but you didn't get into the numbers. In 2008, the state budgeted 77 million for safe schools. In of that, Lee County received 2 million. In 2018, just before Parkland, they allocated 64 million. So 10 years ago, they allocated 13% more than they allocated just last year.
And how many more students?
And you read that article from Ray Rodriguez, and it makes it sound as if we're giving them all of the money that they need. 13, well, you don't care about those numbers. At no point in that funding over the past decade has the state ever provided this district with enough money to cover the SRO program completely. And that is the case again this year. We've increased the number of SROs we need in our schools, but they are not providing the funding that we need. So what I'd like to, I guess, ask the state to do, respectfully ask the state to do, is there's all this money set aside for the Guardian program, and so few districts are going to use that money. Would you please, state, release that money to districts who have chosen to go the SRO route? Because that would solve all of the problems. There'd be no disagreement at all between the county and the municipalities if the state would give us enough money, right? So that that would be the the general nature of an editorial and op-ed that I would like to write in response to Ray Rodriguez. Is that something you guys feel comfortable putting your names on?
Well, and I think you also need to address, you know, Mr. Rodriguez talked about, you know, 151% statewide increase. You know, I think you need to, again, put it in context. When they talk about, you know, and they always say, you know, we've got the highest, you know, student funding ever this year. Well, yeah, it's only 3% more than it was 13 years ago, you know, and inflation's been 16%. I mean, when you when you put it in context, you know, when you don't just make it jaded to to serve your own purposes and let the the public know the facts, you know, the fact that they said, you know, that we're going to be getting, you know, $4.5 million in school safety for next year, but that's a one-time thing. If we, you know, what is that? Are you are you stating right now, Ray, that it's going to be that way every single year? No, you're not saying that. So then the following year, all of a sudden, we have, you know, we hire SROs or we figure out the situation, and the problem, you know, becomes exacerbated next year because they haven't changed the law, but they take away the money. And so how do you expect us to do that? So, you know, those are the type of accountability things that the state legislature needs to be held accountable for. And I think, to me, I would support an article that the public gets to know exactly what they're doing because it's it's really deceptive, you know, deceptive.
I can work with staff to get those numbers and give it some context. Are you comfortable with that? Are you comfortable?
Yeah, I mean, what I was going to say earlier, when you were talking about the elementary students, they're almost vulnerable. I mean, and we don't have coverage, you know what I mean? We have to have coverage there. I mean, I would never, I think, right now, our safety is a big issue. Unfortunately, it took Parkland to be the forefront of that, and it shouldn't have been a disaster to get have safe schools because if they're not safe, they're not learning, and that's just the bottom line. So fortunately, I So fortunately, I hate that it's about money. It should be about the kids.
Well, and that's what the discussion has been at this district. The discussion has been, what is best for kids? That was the primary determination, that was the driving factor in this decision, and I'm grateful for that. I mean, you know, in terms of, like, an evaluation, that's my baseline expectation, you know, like, I don't expect this district and this staff to approach safety and security on the cheap. I just, I would expect you to put children first, and from there, figure out how to make it work.
I guess we're supposed to use the brightest and most effective and the best way to go about it. Excuse me.
So, and also, Keith and I were talking today, Sheriff Scott doesn't have a Guardian program, so it's not an option in Lee County.
Well, I mean, if the sheriff and the district decided to create one, he could.
But he's, he is the other half of this partnership, and in his opinion, there's only one way to do this. He's not, he's not suggesting that we go down the Guardian route in order for the county to save money, or us to save money. He's taken his position, and we've taken our position. Guardian is not on the agenda.
And that's really important for the community to know that. I agree.
And that's exactly, and I think the article needs to say that, you know, Mike, our sheriff, we're blessed with a, you know, and Chris alluded to it a little bit, we're blessed in the sense that we not only have a sheriff's department, we have a organization that is a phenomenal organization. It's not only is it a family amongst themselves, but when you talk about a push of a button, he means it. They're tactical. I mean, if you've ever been involved in an operation with a sheriff, when you need them, they're there. And they're there in a way that just, I mean, it is frightening how fast they respond, and their machine is amazing. And that's because, from Sheriff Scott all the way down to the Road Patrol, they do it right. And his position is, we're not going to cut corners, and we're going to do it right. And so it wasn't even an option for him, because I think, you know, when the sheriff patrol, you know, our sheriff in Lee County, our sheriff, and everyone that serves under them, they do it right, from the courthouses to our schools. And so that's why it never was an option, because, again, he stands with us.
And that starts in our own Public Safety Academy, right? With Todd Everly and the training of those officers?
I just have one other thing. Also, our SROs are trained in bombs, and I don't know, was the Guardian, I don't...
That's probably part of, no, the Guardian does not get that...
They're not going to get, I mean, and we have a lot of bomb scares, but embalmed threats, and that's, that's a whole nother element to the safety.
And the drug tax force, and the crimes, and the major crimes, and our gangs, they have it all, and you don't get that with guardians.
And we can't, and we need to not keep, we need to not make the assumption that any attack on our students would only be by gun.
That's right.
You have to be prepared for any scenario, and I believe that the best way to do that is with an SRO.
Correct, that was my point. Thank you.
Right, and I agree. Very smart. Ms. Fisher?
And I don't want us to neglect appreciating our Chief Newlin and the Cape Coral Police Department, along with the mayor and the city council, as well as Chief Diggs and Fort Myers, because they have the same training, and our SROs are full-fledged police officers with some specialized training, happen to be stationed in schools during the day, but they are still out there protecting the community. And so I really agree with what everyone has said here today, that that's the best way to go, even though it may be a little bit more expensive. It's worth it in the long run.
Well, the other thing, too, that, you know, that if you talk to Chief Newlin, or Diggs, or Sheriff Scott, the intel that they can receive, that they can use directly in policing their respective communities is absolutely critical. And then the other thing is, I believe that, and this is something that they've all said, they all have a great deal of respect for one another. So we're fortunate right now to have, you know, two chiefs and a sheriff that I think really communicate like each other, work well together, and so I really feel that moving forward, we're going to have a really good cohesive law enforcement presence in all of our schools.
So do we have consensus with those changes, that I get this to Lauren and Denise tomorrow? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Let's go.
You're off the hot seat.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we are now, it's time for public comment. Public comment needs to be, during briefing meetings, is to address only what's been discussed, but Mr. Martin will give you the criteria, and at this time, we don't have any cards, correct?
School Board Policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this briefing meeting agenda. The subject of comment is limited to the items on the agenda. The time allotted for speakers, three minutes.
On my right, okay, we have Ms. Ware, and on my left, okay, Ms. Ware.
Gwen Gittens.
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Ware was right there. Will you please forgive me?
I forgive you, in public.
In public, and I'm sure, yes, there are times that our eyes never will quite get rid of any fogs. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens, before you begin, I need to ask you to please take your tag off, the Gittens for School Board, comply with policy. Thank you, ma'am.
Gwen Gittens, and the comment I wanted to make about the discussion of the SROs, and I was sitting there, and one thing Mr. Toyber said was people taking things out of context, having jaded comments and mixed up facts. And I can remember the morning I woke up and turned on my television, and all I heard was, "SROs are mandatory, and it's going to cost $8 million." And that's what a lot of people heard, and what a lot of people see. You see the number of people in the audience today, there's not that many people that are going to hear this conversation, that are going to hear your definitions and why you chose what. So my comment is basically, we have to get out in front of things and not wag the dog. We should have been, you know, as a district, making, having this conversation and making these comments before anything else came out. And then we would have possibly a better, you know, chance of working with people in the community to make those decisions. But when people are not informed or educated of the whole process, they tend to make up what they don't know, and sometimes those facts are left out. So my comment is, I would like to see, when something like this came along, for you all to say, this is the process, this is what 7026 says, these are our options, and these are why we're choosing this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member comments, Ms. Fisher.
Oh, wow. Let's see, I think, I don't have any comments today.
Ms. Giavennelli.
I think I speak a lot, too.
Ms. Patrica.
Thank you.
Mr. Toyber.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
I have none.
And I have none at this time. Mr. Martin.
None, thank you.
Dr. Atkins.
Only one, just to apologize to Chief Newlin, who I called handily a number of times, apparently, in this presentation. Nobody corrected me until Dr. Pruitt sent me a text, "Newlin." Feel free to correct me, but otherwise, no comments. Thank you.
All right, and we had other components for good of the order. Were we able to address everything that you wanted to bring forward, Ms. Patrica?
No, I just have two questions. Where do we stand on evaluation instruments for the superintendent and the board attorney?
I have completed an extensive redraft of the superintendent's evaluation, and it is sitting with Dr. McCullers, and Dr. Atkins has not had a chance to look at it. As soon as they have responded to me, I will share it with you. Essentially, what I've tried to do is take the six areas that we agreed on from the workshop, merge them with all, merge the comments from that document with all of the comments from the existing document, and essentially come up with attributes within those six categories and rubrics that incorporate all of those statements that were embodied in the document we used to use in rubrics, so that it's, I hope, a much more efficient document, and much more, at least when people check things off, everybody else, everybody will know exactly how they view the situation. So I've really worked, I've tried to get it done, so...
So where do we stand in terms of, when does your contract start?
July 1.
So where do we stand in terms of, obviously, we can't get it done before July 1. Are we comfortable, Dr. Atkins, are you comfortable knowing the direction we're headed with this new, but not approving it until, you know, probably sometime in August? Are you comfortable operating under, you don't know how you're going to be evaluated for six weeks?
I am, in that I've seen the drafts that are, that are out there, and I've had an opportunity to have, continue to have opportunity to have input, and I think that a lot of, like, I just took a quick glance at the, at this particular draft, and I think the board chair is attempting, like was mentioned, to incorporate a lot of what into a smaller, you know, more concise document. So, you know, those are the things that I'm feeling I'm going to be evaluated on in any way moving forward, and so I'm comfortable, yes.
Okay, as long as he's comfortable, because I would hate to wait another year. I don't want to do that old evaluation instrument again. And what about board attorney, who also starts July 1? Where do we stand on that one?
Nowhere.
Nowhere, okay.
Would somebody like to take that on?
Board Attorney Evaluation.
Document, we know that what we have is, well, actually, I guess I would say, having worked on the superintendent one, I think I would really like people to see the work that's been done in the superintendent one. If people like it, perhaps we can use that as a model for the board attorney one. If people don't like it, then at least we know, we've had three examples to look at what, you know, doesn't satisfy our need to evaluate our employees. Does that make sense?
So then we'll go a year under the old evaluation instrument for, because he doesn't have a clue of how we would be evaluating it.
I doubt it.
Oh, okay.
It is concise, I would say.
But would you feel comfortable with, as we were moving along, developing it?
It may not be that much longer. If, you know, I was going to volunteer, if the conceptual concept is approved, I don't mind taking the responsibility of doing, to work it from there, but I don't want to reinvent the wheel or take it in a different direction, but I don't mind, you know, volunteering to do that.
All right. Okay, good. And then my second question is, where do we stand on approving a legislative platform?
Another meeting?
Yes. That's what I'm asking, pretty much.
Close, although I did hear something from Ms. Patrica today that was intriguing, that, about reallocating the money from the Guardian program that I mentioned in the workshop. I don't know where the board stands on that. But regarding priority number one, which is the, the old Grow Your Own, which has now manifested itself into Grow Your Own again, the work on that is essentially done. Ms. Green mentioned getting with members, or at least those members that have indicated some willingness to sponsor that legislation. I think it was Representative Eagle, and possibly Senator Benequisto, and representative of the board to meet, to discuss that. The second item, regarding teacher certification, and trying to relax some of those requirements, has been in draft form, but needs to be flushed out by HR. I have been in, Dr. Pruitt and I work fairly closely, so we've been discussing that, and I did send Ms. Green what is a draft of that, but not to be shared necessarily with the legislative delegation. And the third item, which is the lab school, is before you tonight to approve the MOU. So the work relative to what laws may need to be changed, or at least asked to be changed, and the heavy lifting is going to have to happen moving forward here. So that's, those are the three items. Your approval of them can be brought to you, if that's the consensus where the board's at, and those are the three, that can be approved at any time. We've usually done it a little bit closer to the legislative session, but, which doesn't start until March in this coming year or so, but that's your pleasure. I mean, it's, it can be brought to officially be approved at any time.
Ms. Fisher?
So at one point, didn't we agree that we were going to try to get an earlier start?
Yes.
So that we could work with our legislative delegation before the session starts?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And use that opportunity when they are here in town, to really communicate with them in a meaningful way.
Yeah, and I know Dr. Atkins wants to speak, but to answer that, we really have started a lot sooner than we have in the past. I mean, we started essentially after the session closed in March, working on some of this. Of course, we've been throwing new things, like 7026 and other things, that legislatively we've had to deal with.
In addition to that, we did have a recent conversation with Carol Green, and made her aware of, really, all three of these issues got into the nitty-gritty, so she had a full understanding, so she could take that forward and be able to start working with our legislative delegation. I did, I did send a quick email to our legislative delegation, let them know about the MOU that's coming before the board tonight, and indicated that we would be following up if we do a ceremonial signing with them, that we would, you know, of course, extend an invitation to them. I did follow up with a phone call, at least to the offices of two of them, that agreed to be the sponsors, Benequisto and Ray Rodriguez, didn't speak to either, either party, but thought, you know, at least it's important to leave a message. In addition to that, I know that Ms. Patrica and I had a conversation a little bit about a couple other items that we might want to consider at some point. One had to do with per pupil spending, the other had to do with, had to do with our, we're actually a system here in school district that we prescribe choice, but, you know, I think not requiring, you know, the parameters around how that choice is applied, because we're already doing, and she can speak to it more eloquently than I can, but, you know, that's something that we had discussed, exploring beyond what the three initial items were on our platform. But we're well on the way with formulating, you know, what we need to get across the table to them. I think the biggest one that needs the most work is the MOU with Florida Gulf Coast University. We wanted to reach the MOU first, and then we've already got a meeting scheduled to meet with them to start working on the particulars of what the ask will be this year of our local delegation.
Any other comments? Ms. Patrica?
So the three items that we discussed at the workshop, I think, are three good items, and I think Carol Green feels like there's a likelihood of success on, one, two, maybe all three of those items. But I feel that in addition to that, we, we need to make some big asks that will allow us to work on long-term goals over a period of years, so that we can have those conversations with our legislators. She's identified a couple that will be there for a long time, and a couple, a couple of them are exactly what Dr. Atkins just said. If we are going to change the way education functions in the state of Florida, we have to ask them to make those changes. And, you know, it's not, it's not going in there and yelling at them and saying, you don't give us enough money, it's helping them to understand the needs of the districts.
Growth formula?
Not a growth formula, more, more funding, more per pupil funding. And, you know, like, when we go out and we educate the public on the half penny sales tax, we are able to say that since 2011, we have asked them to increase that .5 million, they have said no. That gives me confidence in going to the local community and saying, hey, we need help. We've asked the state, they've said no. If we're not asking that of our state, then I don't think we're doing what we're supposed to be doing in terms of trying to improve the overall environment of education for our students.
Thoughts, comments? Do you, do you think it's necessary for us to gather again before we make a vote, to see if we can determine something that we want to include for those big asks?
I mean, maybe a briefing? I think we should workshop. I think we should workshop.
Yeah, because we need to have conversations. If we're going to ask a big ask, we need to find out what people are in.
This is a whole different conversation. We need, we need a workshop, for sure, because that's a whole, you're talking about a whole different direction.
And our intention initially was to do it much sooner, but it has taken a while to flesh out the three things that the board agreed on in the last workshop. So I, I would say that we could probably put it on a workshop for, sometime in August, maybe late August.
And then we'd still be ahead of the game.
Yeah, okay.
That work, Mary?
That works, yes. Yeah, I think the workshop's important.
So then, any other good of the order, and then I'll share mine?
Kathleen.
Ms. Morgan.
Are you done? I'm done. Okay. So I, I don't know why I brought this up as good of the order, but the question was asked by staff about the business of the flag being down here the last time. Is this something that, that we were going to have all summer without the, the color guard? So is it their responsibility to put the flag down there and move it back, or we, you know, this is really a housekeeping thing, but staff wants to know what to do with the flag.
I, I never remember until that happened. Other summers, we've just kept the flag here, we turn around and face the flag.
I, under my breath, said to Steve, I hate turning my back to the crowd, and he said, oh, I'll put it out there. That was really...
Oh, okay.
That was really all it was.
I think it was just a spontaneity.
But then we become part of the crowd.
My back doesn't turn the same way.
All right, very good.
Or not all of us are returning our back, we're just turning to the side, but, okay.
They probably like it. So what's the verdict? Yeah. Now I'm confused.
Well, I thought it was very gallant and chivalrous of Steve to pick up that flag and put it down.
I don't have a prob, I don't have a problem moving it, but if, but I mean, for the summer, it's probably a good idea if we had this, if we had it in front of us.
Is that what everybody wants?
I would think. Just move it.
I'll go with the majority.
And move it.
I'm, I'm happy either way.
I am too.
I, you know.
I have no preference.
I never feel like I'm turning my back, so it's, so for me, because of where I'm positioned, that's never been a concern. But I can understand where Ms. Patrica is, because she would have more of that angle.
Better in a corner? Well, I like having it here during the meeting. I like having it.
It needs to be there.
And when we stand in turn, well, then we're joining the crowd. Everyone's facing the same way to the flag, so.
That's fine.
Ms. Patrica, it's on you, because...
I don't care, whatever you guys want, I just, I feel uncomfortable.
I'm happy with it the way it is.
Mary, I feel uncomfortable.
We don't want you to feel uncomfortable.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll move it.
All right, and it's not a staff problem. Okay, committee member appointments. I'm throwing something out there. It's been my observation, and I think I'm hearing, that our, that our advisory committees are doing better work. They're doing better work because we're giving them work to do, and because they feel empowered to bring stuff to us. At the same time, looking at some of the members of some of our committees, I think we need to, to be seriously thinking about what we want when we, as board members, appoint people to committees. Sometimes in the past, people have appointed those in the community who have a different opinion, just to get them inside the tent, as opposed to being on the outside of the tent. But I think we've reached a point where that's, that, that kind of exercise is counterproductive in some of our committees. So I just, I really wanted to throw out that maybe when we do appointments, that we have at least one other board member sign off on an appointment. For example, if I appoint, you know, two people, that, you know, at least two other people would have to sign, one or two other people would have to sign on for that appointment, that they agree that that person is qualified, because there, there is pressure for people to be on, be appointed to committees, and it takes the pressure off the individual in the district if someone else needs to say, and I'm not asking for an answer today, because committee assignments haven't come up yet, but I'm just asking people to think about it. The other thing I, I wanted to throw out is, and I didn't mention it when you asked Ms. LaRiviere about the good of the order, but the protocol. Do we need to workshop that, or are people pretty comfortable with it as is to go in? Essentially, all it does is say, if you're a vendor, you can't, you can't appear. The presentation has to be aligned with K-12 or adult education. The written request must identify at least one of the district's strategic plan goals, and the final decision is the board chair and the superintendent. So it's essentially what we've been doing all along, but we're starting to get people asking from the community to come up and present, and I think it would help staff if they were able to say it doesn't meet the guidelines right off the bat, rather than have it come all the way up to us, and we have to say, well, are we going to do it? We're not going to do it, and what is our rationale? So that's why Dr. Atkins worked with his staff to put together this amendment to the protocol, which sort of tightens it a little bit, and I asked that it be sent out to you all. I'm sorry if you got the impression that it was a mandate from me that it go in, but I am looking for feedback from you, whether you want to have a discussion at a workshop, or whether you're comfortable with it as you see it.
Yeah, I would appreciate a discussion for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's board protocols agreed upon by board members, sitting board members. And I know we, we change at least some part of the board every two years, so it is a work in progress. Can I ask a question? What prompted that?
We've had, we've had requests from community people to come up and talk about what they do for the district, or just talk whatever, and they want their 15 minutes, and I just don't feel it's appropriate, because my personal feeling as board chair is that it's, it's not related to the business of the board, particularly at a board meeting. Some, it would be different if they were presenting at a briefing or at a workshop. But to come up and talk about a community service that's provided for the benefit of students in Lee County at a, at a board meeting, to me, is not the business of the board at, at that particular time. And so rather than being in the position of saying no to board members when I, when this is coming up, and having my own discretion about who gets to appear, I would like to have in board protocol an understanding from the board that this is what we want to hear at a board meeting, and this is what we don't want to hear at a board meeting, we want to hear at a briefing or at a workshop.
I think my only, when I read that, and my only issue about that is, okay, one of our goals is to improve public perception, and we have people who are working in the community to benefit our schools, and I'll use a specific example. I had the coordinator of the Streets Alive, and they've done a lot of work with Franklin Park and connectivity for the kids walking from some of those schools to after-school places like the Stars Complex. Okay, the lady wanted to come and do a 15-minute presentation. I suggested to her that it might be at a briefing meeting, but I think we need to hear that, and I, and I think we need to appreciate those community members who are supporting us and doing things for different areas of our community that are benefiting our school kids. And I'm looking right here at our Vision 2020 dashboard. So for goal number one, we're 90% accomplished. For goal number two, which is to improve or increase family and community engagement, we're at 40%. And for increasing retention of highly effective employees, we're at 80%. And for goal four, becoming a model continuous improvement organization, we're at 90%. So if we want to work on goal two, I mean, I think we need to be open and welcoming people and listening to what it is that they're doing, what their engagement is. That's community engagement, when people are doing those kinds of things. And I just use that one as a specific example, because it's recent on my, on my calendar, because I've heard several times, you know, that they want to share that with us. So I, I'm reluctant to turn people off. I mean, when, when we're looking at a goal for our Vision 2020, where we need, obviously need some improvement, or do we want to change that goal and not have increased family and community engagement? I'm just, and, and, you know, we all have different, different perceptions, so I, I just wanted to share mine.
Do I still get to ask you to have staff brief us on stuff? Regardless of this protocol? Yes?
Say that one more time.
Do I still get to ask Dr. Atkins to have staff brief us on things despite this change in protocol?
This is, this is about board meetings, not, not action meetings.
Action meetings of the board.
I'm sorry, action meetings.
This is only about action meetings. I think public presentations at action meetings of the board are inappropriate across the board. Does say briefing? That, that, that is a briefing agenda or briefing meeting, yes. I agree with you, Kathleen.
Well, a lot of what, what we're talking about there is, you know, you're talking, you're talking specific to, you know, people in a particular department or part of the organization to come, to come brief us on work that we're doing. This is, this is something that I think typically falls outside of that, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's like if, when any member of the public, or even a vendor, has something that they would like to share for us, and we get frequent requests for them to come and do a presentation before us, there are, I, and as I look at it, it says board meetings, it doesn't say specifically which board meeting, as I, as I've looked at it, at different, at the, at the beginning intro, so I was taking it to mean action meetings.
It, it really...
The, the, the board, the action meeting is the board's meeting.
Exactly.
It's a business meeting. Briefing is the superintendent's presentation to the board, information that the board needs to make decisions going down the road, or where the superintendent needs guidance. And workshop is where we talk amongst ourselves about things that we feel are important, or providing direction to the superintendent. So when I read this, I still think it's relevant to, to everything. We've had, and I don't want to embarrass anybody in the public who's come before us, but sometimes I feel like people use us as an advertisement for what they're doing in the community. You know, they have an opportunity to come talk about their great stuff, and they use 15 minutes of our board meeting to do it, and that's, that's, I'm trying, I'm, I'm concerned about that.
I see what you're saying.
I'm trying to figure out a way so that if people approach us, we know that, they know that, it's got to be related to our program, it's got to be related to our vision. If they can make that connection, then we make the decision about whether or not they present. If they don't make that connection, then, then it's a non-starter. But again, if this is going to be, you want to workshop, let's workshop it. Nope, okay, Chris says no. Melissa?
I don't think, I think this is the workshop.
Yeah, I know, that's sort of what I...
It's not a huge...
I think there's just, the decision needs to be made, now. I mean, I don't think you need a workshop to, I mean, I understand Mary's viewpoint. I think we just need clarification on what exactly you're trying to eliminate. I, I think it's just an action meeting versus a briefing, and I think that, that's all. I think you just need to clarify, and then I think it's fine.
Well, if I want some, a group to come and do a formal presentation at any of our meetings, I need to submit a written request. But it needs to be logical, and it can't be about somebody wanting to toot their own horn. And if there's somebody who, and, and I'm not saying that that's what you're talking about, so please, I'm just...
Nor was I talking about that particular...
No, no, I'm not talking about any of these things. But what I'm wondering is, probably what's even better, if there are groups that are doing things that are remarkable, I believe they need to be recognized. And if there are remarkable things, we have, and we do have, we should be able to take care of that when we do any recognitions, and I think we should respect it if a board member wants to recognize a group at that time for something that they do. But I, I do respect the request. I think it's of the ideological piece, and I think we need, we really need to consider it. And if there's a group that wants to do a, a presentation on it and let the community know, we can take care of it in one of these rooms on the, you know, at the beginning of a, before a meeting, or, or after, and public can go in and find out the information.
I just have a question. I mean, has this come up a lot? I mean, because I wasn't aware, so...
Yes, it's come up enough...
So that's, I mean, that's, I don't understand why we're having the conversation, because I haven't seen all these presentations that, that have affected our action meetings.
It's been coming to me, and it's, and, and not, okay, it's come to me, and I have felt enough that I have felt uncomfortable about being the one to say no, that's number one. But two, in the past on the board, I have, I have, I have been less than enthusiastic about some of the presentations that board members have asked to bring to the board meeting, because I did not feel it, it had to do with the business of the board, but it was a political agenda or a personal agenda. So that's, that's where this comes from. I mean, like, other than a fellow elected official from another governing body coming to an action meeting and saying, please relax your three-minute requirement for us, I don't, I don't see a presentation as being appropriate on an action meeting. I mean, briefing meetings is where we deliberate. Briefing meetings are where we gather information and receive information. Action meetings are where we act. So to me, that's, seems pretty straightforward to me.
The only one that I recall that we've had is the redistricting. They had, they asked for 15 minutes, I mean, and they were given that.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, I don't...
Well, you haven't seen, Melissa, you haven't seen them.
Okay.
Okay, is, is part of it, number one, and two, you haven't been here when it was something that, that was a problem, and I just don't want to see it become a problem again without bringing it up. Mr. Martin?
Just to clarify, the redistricting presentation is under this, was under the current school board policy, and the policy, in the terms of public comment opportunities, provides an opportunity for someone to request at a, at a regular meeting to present a special presentation of the 15 minutes.
Right, no, I felt like it was, I'm, I was, yeah.
This is separate from that. This is a separate opportunity for that.
This is like if a board member wants a presentation.
Oh, I, I don't think we, I don't, maybe I...
He hasn't commented.
There's a toyper.
He's like, yep, whatever.
Either way, I'm, this one really is not, it's taking a lot of time for something else.
From our perspective, I think it, it simply puts a little bit of, of a parameter around these type of requests, and it gives, gives me, you know, as a, as a superintendent, as I evaluate a request, gives me at least something to, to look toward, that any type of request would, would, we would want it to fall under these type of, of protocols. And I think it would make the decision a more objective one instead of subject, I'm trying, you know, I think we're trying to take some of the subjectivity and feelings out of these type of, of requests, and also, I think that it, it also provides, honestly, a board member, you know, an opportunity too, to say, you know, I understand, I appreciate that you want to present to the board, but this is, this is our adopted protocols, and, and, you know, this is what the, those requests need to conform to. That's all.
And I apologize, maybe my memory fails me, but I, I'm having a hard time understanding what might have prompted this, because I don't recall that we've had a problem with presentations from...
And I'm not, I'm not going to give you names, because I'm not going, I, I'm not going to dredge it up. I'm just going to say that I, as a board, as the board chair, have been, it has been requested that we do presentation, at least one presentation, I'll say at least one, that I felt I was making a decision on behalf of the board about whether or not a presentation should take place, and I didn't feel that the parameters were in place that allowed me to make that decision. In other words, it was an open season. So, you know, anybody can ask for anything, and for me to say no, then it becomes very personal. The board chair has said no to a board member about a requested presentation. The superintendent has said no to a board member about a request for presentation. All we're trying to do is, is say, this is what's appropriate at a board meeting, and we can just take that out of it. Yes, Steve?
Now I can win. Thank you, Ms. Morgan, for putting it that way. I, I think that the, to, to put our board chair, whether it be Ms. Morgan or, or successive board chairs, in, in the superintendent's position where they have to make the subjective call without something to rely on, I think is unfair. So to me, I believe that that type of protocol, whether we need to, whether that protocol that way it's written needs to be adjusted, is something maybe workshop can decide, but, but I would support that, I don't think it, the onus should be on our board chair to have to make that determination, especially when you're, when it's other board members coming forward. I think we all should have some type of protocol to know, before you even ask, it's, it's not going to make it, or it will.
And I would suggest, and I would be willing to create some type of a form, so that it blints that you... blints that you do, you write down what part, which part of the strategic plan is this addressing, and so that it has some criteria to make that job easier for the superintendent and for the chair to make that decision.
So you just want a checklist, and if it meets the criteria, boom.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
I think it's very logical.
I'm good with that. So, I mean, if something doesn't meet the criteria, then, okay.
And I think, Mary, to your point, I think we should workshop it so that you could, so that everybody's comfortable with that.
What is the criteria?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think, I think we need to establish, work together to establish one.
Make sure it's very clear, so that we all are on the same page.
Yes. Okay. Yes. Okay, we got there. Looking forward to your job? Keith, you looking forward to July 1st?
I don't see your lying shirt on.
I think he's got one foot out the door. Well, but he's going to stay on a little bit past July 1st.
No, no, in July 31st, my bad, my bad.
He's counted the days, 21.
For days.
Today. And then my good of the order, and I guess we could incorporate it with any of the other workshops, would be for us, as we're looking at the sales tax referendum, and would be the determination of the criteria for the selection of the oversight committee, so that it's, the only thing that the guidelines say is that the board will select an oversight committee. And we need to be sure that we workshop that and have the criteria in place, and maybe each of us look to other school districts and what criteria they might, if they had a specific criteria, they used to assist, you know, when they were making those decisions.
That kind of circles back, Kathleen, to what you were talking about with board appointments, committee appointments. I also have a high degree of discomfort with student advisory committee, because I now have names coming across my desk of my children's friends, and I don't think that I should be appointing those students. And I don't think that I should, like, I'm the mom who will bench my kid if I'm the coach before I'll play him, you know what I mean? And my kid's friends shouldn't suffer that, because their name came across my desk. But I am not going to appoint someone I know. I just, I can't do it.
I agree.
So we do need to find a more objective way of doing this. And I think the same is true for, we do need to have the discussion about the oversight committee, because it has come up several times in the public, and I think that if we can provide those details far in advance of November 6th, we'd be in better shape. So let's workshop that sooner or later. Yes, I agree. I would like to get that done in August, because I'm getting comments also, that it would really help public know that, you know. So we're appointing people. Who are we appointing? And --
I agree.
So we'll get that workshopped in August. Okay.
I don't think we have anything else for good of the order. And that being, any last comments, Dr. Atkins?
No, ma'am.
I'm adjourning this meeting. We'll see you back at 5:45. We have a special presentation.
That is correct.